Yeah, there's no, there's not too much action. I mean, these are things that they fall in one. Yeah, there's always, there's always changes. Yeah, yes, exactly, yeah. Oh, really? Well, he might remember you, because he remembers a lot. Oh, really? Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. Yeah, yeah, we had, um, right before, it kind of stopped last week. Yeah, and stuff like that, Dick was in town for a while, Florida. Yeah, yeah, he had my phone, um, oh, that one is on through. It's not stuff, so, yeah, that is great to see that, I said. Oh, yeah, yep. Yeah, really? He'll be a place to do, down, also, I can't see it. Yeah. Um, good, I think he, well, he broke his nose. Yeah, but you should, um, see him plus, so, yeah, but he's getting around now better. Yep, yep, he's been handling it. Oh, yeah, yep. Yes, he does. I told him, I said, you need to get rid of the high car, edible car, and get yourself a medium car now. Yes, yeah. As he like said. Yeah, well, she had lots of time to go fishing and get a lot of trouble getting in now. So, I don't know if he's done that at all this summer, I really, I want to see him go forward, yeah. I know he wants to, but, um, I need to go. Hi.
Yeah. Something that Dan goes to, but I believe I have probably got emails on it, so, I just wanted to sign everybody up at the same time.
What's your deadline, you saying that everybody else? Did you sign me in for it?
No, I haven't signed me in, so that's why I didn't keep going.
Okay.
Well, no, I, I actually, I've signed me enough.
Oh, you have?
Yeah, I did.
So, it's Thursday?
Before I start to check out.
Oh, you can do a virtual option?
Oh, that might be.
Oh, that's nice, needed.
Because we're trying to get more participation, there's a lot of people that don't want to sign. Now, me being down at board.
Yes.
Yeah.
And if anybody wants to put out, register, it's something I'll try, but. God, I had to, um, before, um, before the meeting, we'll be down there early now. Probably not going to be part of this room, but just go over something, if those changes to the constitution. It'll be going on, um, September. So, it's going to go through, um, the closing, and then see what happens.
So, it's at seven, is when, uh, people can sign a person, it's like. But, um, yes, the deadline is September twenty-fifth. I don't know which one.
Excuse me, but, um, could already. It wasn't, um, I was down there.
Did you get to the end?
Yeah, I was down there. I don't know, I don't think it was good as other years, but, I don't know, I didn't get a file. Still, all went off. Hey, Tracy.
Uh, I did, I did not hear from her, I talked to her last week. I had an indication that she was going to be, I don't know.
Yeah, she was in with the story in Bill, presenting herself. She was sitting on there.
I'd like to call our regularly scheduled meeting of the Eastview Board of Education, no order. It is six P M. on August twentieth, two thousand twenty-five. Hold on.
Holton? Elber?
Here.
Foot?
Here.
Shower?
Here.
Sen?
Here.
McDermott?
Here.
Ryan?
Here.
And please rise for the pledge of confession.
I'm pleased that we can be spoken by the United States of America and the Republic of the United States, on the nation, on the power, in this world, with every due justice for all.
All right, moving on to consent agenda.
Second.
By move by Dan, seconded by Christina, to move the agenda, it's stated, uh, hold on please.
Elber?
Aye.
Foot?
Aye.
Shower?
Aye.
Sen?
Aye.
McDermott?
Aye.
Ryan?
Aye.
All right, moving on to recognition of the business correspondents, we have this year with us.
Sarah, Mike, you want me to use, or?
If you have one up there, you can use this.
Otherwise. Thank you very much for allowing me to speak, and I know you have a full agenda tonight, so, um, be brief. Because in your packet, you have a sheet of what you wanted to talk to you about. And that is, I really want your input on what we're doing with that zoning committee that's coming. I represent District One in the county, you may not know, but we have, actually, we have seventeen county board members. But District One is primarily a majority of cities to do. Along with that, I chair a committee called Development Planning, so we're overseeing zoning, we work with economic development efforts, and long range to the strategic plan. We understood that our comprehensive plan needing updating, uh, before we look at some things with zoning, so we accomplished that a couple of years ago, and we had meetings right here in school. Now that we have that planned in, we have always heard from people that our zoning makes it difficult to do this or that, or whatever. But we didn't have any specific recommendations, so our county board chairman, who was from Stockton, um, close, named, um, twelve people with a combination of backgrounds, not, um, county board members, real estate, uh, legal, USDA, um, an architect, um, just people who represent areas of the county to look at zoning permits. And what I'm asking you tonight is to get input on that. I don't expect you to read this, but if you go online and you want to look, donate this county zoning, it would end up being this thick. So, there's nothing wrong with thickness, it's easy to find what you're looking for, but it's really not right now, so, um, we're going to try to revamp the organization part of it. But the major things that we have heard, that disturbed people are being discussed, um, initially with the campaign, and the one that you may recognize, because we are surrounded by agricultural land, is, uh, change on the printed rule that if you're going to build a house in the county, that that house must be bottom part of forty acres. Well, you and I both know, just, we have a rule, that shouldn't be, it's always bugged, and actually, the rule is broken the majority of the times, because people, uh, they have a farm, they want to have, uh, a child move on their farm, or the child may want to have their parents move on, or people want to break off, so they come to board the zoning board, and explain what their plans are, that they're not going to take a lot of time, land, out of production, but they do want to put, uh, a house on property, and ninety-nine point nine percent of the time, the zoning board raises it. Well, some people feel that that's fine, and that may be fine, but it does delay things, adds cost, um, it adds, um, some particular issues, um, to make sure that there's accessibility from the roads, it doesn't block traffic, things like that. So, there has been a recommendation to reduce that forty acres, something smaller. Right now, we're discussing one acre, and that's just, well, it's not to mean that it goes directly through, we're just an ad hoc committee that does present a report at the end of the year to come forward. I'd like your input on that, because it is a major issue, and sometimes I think there are part, parts of a farm that are not very productive, that might help a farmer, um, financially, or just help him have, uh, land for a worker to live on. And because I know Eastview has plans to grow, they have given us their, their future plans, um, we do want to see that happen. And one of the things our county board is really interested in is helping young people live, stay, be educated, and retire in this county, we have a lot of people retiring in this county right now, but we want to see young people. So, we, uh, the committee I chair has started that first time home buyer, uh, loan program, so that we can help them with their initial down payment, so they only have to pay, uh, like a two percent for the ten years. We did start a program that was just a positive rent, helps small business, uh, we're looking for anything that will help, uh, young people, um, looking at the big issue of childcare, of course, uh, Eastview has a great care, childcare program, but, um, Stockton's not. The, uh, particular items that we are talking about right now are reducing costs, like not having to hire a registered design professional, um, putting an accessory building on the lot, because right now, if a farmer wants to have workers close by on the farm, they may have a deteriorating trailer on the farm or something, but for them to actually put another residence on the lot is not allowed, so they can get, that might be helpful. All kind of the tiny homes, smaller homes, things like that. But I'd like to open it up right now for any concerns or questions that you might have, that you might think of, that would make it easier for you to get a permit. I mean, my neighbor, tax maker, she wants to put in something in her backyard, and she had no idea how long the process was, and last night, leaders, a woman who, it was really a nightmare, she had two parcels that she bought as one lot, but really, they were still recording as two, and it took her more than a year to get her permit. So, I'd like to see if any of you have had any situation that I might share with you. Any of you ever taken our going permit?
Diane, I guess, I guess I'm interested from the standpoint of you're asking for the board for input on, on the zoning, basically, the zoning process.
Right.
How does what we have to say enhance or help that process? Because I, I don't, I'm not drawing, I'm not drawing the connection.
And, and I think that's really understandable, when the board chair, Corey Cassens, who was USDA, he wanted us to each reach out to every taxing line. I think he saw you as a group of leaders that could help spread the word, who might have heard one thing or another. Um, last night, I took a suggestion from the Menominee Township Board, they said, why don't you ask the engineers and the contractors? Because they're the ones who deal with the zoning office, so now I'll be doing that. But because you have been in this community a long time, and because you may have had, um, comments, and because you might want to see some changes made, your leadership and your knowledge is really helpful for us. So, I'm just reaching out because of that.
Okay, thank you. Sure. I personally don't have any input on this, I mean, I've, I've been involved in some of the ordinance changes in the city, and they've always been open, the thing about it is, is when you go to them and talk to them about ordinance changes, right? You have to have your ducks in a row, and you got to do your homework. I can't speak, uh, from anything from a county perspective that I can think of that would be helpful, and that's just my lack of knowledge of not following the process.
What do you have at the Indian Park range?
Yeah.
What kind of land, what do you expect that's going to happen there?
Yeah, I don't know, I mean, that's farmland, right? So, you know, it's their decision what they want to do with it, but the zoning board, they have to follow that process, right?
They, they do, they do, and that's why some advanced information and ideas, whether it's about, do you want to have multi-family, is your role going to be capable of that? Are you going to want to have large lots? Do you want to help young people have affordable housing? Those are things that the city has to answer, and I'm not sure if that property is in the city limits or not, you know, Dan?
Not as head sign, but when it's developed, it will be.
You're not sure?
I said, it's not city at this time.
It's not city.
It's very hard.
It is.
But if it's developed, the city will go after any participation of that, and they're going to want one that serves the city.
It is within the mile and a half, which means if anything goes on there, the city manager and the zoning board there will communicate with the county zoning office. And when that gets developed, we all know that opens up more opportunities. So, for you to think about, how can we help grow our population of young people for our schools? And we want to have young families, because the research has shown that if you keep people in your communities up to a certain age, they're more likely to become permanent. That's one of the reasons that I always, it's also strongly about community college, because it's another way that we are able to keep people in our local homes. Like I said, this is really just informational, um, our members of the committee, um, give you their names, because if you don't want to talk with me, if you want to talk with anyone else. I said Corey Cassens, who's retired from USDA locally, John Creighton, who's on the county board and from Stockton, Madon Trost from Stockton, Brian Angel, who's an architect, Anne Caswell, a legal attorney, Joel Holland from Banky, Ramon Diener, real estate, Bill Neaker, who is our current zoning administrator, um, Mike Denver from Elizabeth, Steve McIntyre, um, real estate, Tony Jones from Stockton, and Beth Bransky. So, thanks for, for your time, and like I say, if you come upon a problem or an issue, let us know, because we're, we're happy to try to come to some, um, happy conclusion.
Thanks, Diane.
Thank you, Diane. All right, so moving on, is there anybody else who would like to address the board? All right, if not, we'll move on to staff reports, Mr. Hyer.
Perfect, uh, Thursday, August seventh, we had the old Jackson O'Connell splash bass, Vince at Dudley Park, uh, just always the fantastic, get back into school, get back into routine kind of feel. We had incredible turnout, you know, we had a lot more of them, we had more junior high, and a few high school kids there too, which is awesome. It was a great environment, and Lori Miller did an incredible job of welcoming four of the dads, obviously, Steve O'Connell, and they kind of have that same classroom, that helps grill hot dogs and chips and all that kind of stuff for kiddos, families that are there. Anyway, it's awesome back to school thing, obviously, just a good time to reflect on, you know, Jackson O'Connell family, great back to school event, so, kudos to all of them for all their hard work and efforts on that. Uh, same shout out I pretty much give every summer, and I don't mean it in a sincere way, like, it really is terrific, the, the summer crew, um, just does an excellent job of getting all the people ready, they do a really, really nice job. And huge thanks to all those people over the summer that, you know, nobody sees working, getting things ready, but they just do a wonderful job doing it, so, awesome, thanks to, obviously, Beacons, and like I said, all the other people. Secretary is working constantly, you know, the registration stuff, it just seems to almost happen naturally, but there's a lot of time and energy and effort that those people put into that, so, it's awesome. Saint Mark's, Saint Mark's is always one I love to point out, because they always reach out to us at the end of the spring, they donate incredible amounts of supplies to us. Uh, so, they donate a ton, we obviously have Matt Page, Thompson, Andrew Bump's trailer, that did an incredible job in that as well, and they rented the whole house as well this year, and we definitely appreciate that part of it. And then, we do these school supply packs, and they actually donated some of the extra ones that they had as well, so, it's been really a team effort, just getting families set up with what they need. We get a lot of people in the spring that ask, and, you know, I mean, it was forty-five plus favorites, it's not a small amount. Uh, you know, so, it's really, really great to be able to always say yes, you know, who doesn't love to do that? So, kudos to all of them, and then one thing I didn't mention on here, but I think it's worth noting, uh, especially when you're talking about your law matter, those pieces. Darren, I just want to, because it is rolling on, I can do their job of that, on that report, uh, prekey numbers though, you know, prekey numbers are really the highest I've ever seen them at this point in the year. Which is a good problem, but also can be a little dangerous problem, so at the moment, we have, whenever it gets short, it's, we'll have sixty-seven. Our max is seven, and so, it's by far the most I've ever seen, in my time, we've never had any of this before, I hope we don't, hate that. Um, and then there's a potential another one coming that could get additional services, and you just turned three, it's going to start in December potentially, so, I have twenty-three to sixty-eight, it fluctuates. Anyway, it's one of the three hundred and eighty-five.
Any questions for Mr. Hyer? Thank you very much.
Thanks, Wes.
And moving on to Mr. Syria.
Uh, all activities are getting going here pretty quickly, uh, golf, was supposed to golf on Monday for their first meet, however, that got postponed due to Mother Nature. So, tonight was actually meet number one for the golf team, and, uh, we'll find out here, hopefully, in a little bit, how they did. Um, the other sports will begin football Friday, and then volleyball and others starting next meet, so, um, if you look at the calendar on that second page, you'll see that it starts to get pretty busy, uh, some days with many, many events. Uh, summertime, we had talked back in July about our summer credit recovery, and at that time, there was a couple of students that were a little iffy, well, glad to say that one of those students turned it around and completed it, and of the nine kids that we had on summer credit recovery, eight of them successfully did everything they were supposed to, we had one that fell short, chose not to do what they were supposed to do, so. Uh, eight out of nine, we'll take those numbers, uh, nine out of nine would have been great. Uh, maintenance echoing what Wes had said, uh, you know, Grover, the maintenance staff, uh, everybody that's here in the summer, uh, given with all of the little curveballs, uh, that we sometimes throw at them, last second things, oh yeah, we forgot about this. At least they never complained in front of us, so, whatever they might have said once they walked away, uh, we can't control it, but, uh, everything got done and ready to go, and the buildings look great, so, always thankful to that. Um, new school year, uh, a much better start for me, because I was actually here and not sitting at home sick this year for the first week of school, so, uh, from that end, I feel like at least the first few days have, have gone well. Uh, there's always a few things that catch you by surprise, obviously, we've got a few new things going on with our, our new corridor safety system up here in the building, and, uh, that's created some questions, and, and as you can imagine, some teenagers, uh, you know, maybe trying to challenge things a little bit, but, uh, overall, I think it's gone well, and we are getting things in a position where I feel good about it, so, it's been a good, uh, the first four days have gone well, I'll say that.
Hi, Darren, are you working with that student, the kid who caught up?
Uh, well, unfortunately, it was a student that if they did what they were supposed to, they would have become a ninth grader, and if they didn't do what they were supposed to, they were going to be remaining in junior high, and so they are remaining in junior high at this time. And, you know, it's not a matter of credits at this point, it was a matter that they had to do the work they needed to do in order to become a ninth grader, so.
Thanks, Darren.
You're welcome. Any other questions?
Thanks, Darren.
Thank you, Darren. You're welcome. Uh, Mr. Potz is not in, uh, I know there was some transportation information, uh, building some ground stuff, uh, so I just want to say thank you to, um, dumb, you know, they started. So I just wanted to say thank you to, um, dumb for getting started and, uh, also the service for getting things going. Agent provided, uh, enter to us for, uh, uh, this. Much appreciated. So thank you for that. Um, so moving on then to unfinished business. If you want to hear anything anybody wanted to discuss. All right. So moving on then to new business. Six point one is an informational item. Uh, we received a $20,000 DRA grant for the corridor system. Uh, I know we still have to get that grant submitted. So thank you, Lisa. And that would be. Well, well, you can story to our corridor project. So thank you for that. Six point two is informational smart criteria for all current staff contact information. So this is, uh, the standard for that we receive. Can you move that up? Six point three is informational student teacher review at the University of New York. So it's nice to have local schools and, um, local colleges so they can receive you. This is just a grant that we have, um, for student teachers, student teacher. Any questions on that? All right. Six point four is a void, uh, pack review letter. Uh, so we had some voids that were received. Uh, we had responded to those voids and then the person to receive the response. Uh, oh, there was, uh, not enough information provided within it, so they did go to the pack. Uh, and this is just the information showing our responses to the pack request for details. So they will review the detail that is provided and see that we met the requirements of the Six point five is also a void, a pack review letter. It's just another request to get a response. So, uh, same thing on that. Any questions on that? Uh, six point six is the fiscal year 25 administration, administration and teacher salary. So it just kind of shows where we stand in regards to our salaries. It's kind of a nice way on, obviously, to see. And, uh, oh, maybe we'll picture that everybody's salary. Any questions on that? All right. Six point seven is information review of preliminary budget. So, um, I know we've provided some details here and she has joined us this evening, you know, to kind of talk through that a little bit. So.
Okay. Can you hear me all right?
Yes.
Yep.
Okay. Um, in front of you, above your packet was the actual budget summary for the preliminary budget. But I also put it in front of you this evening is a, um, kind of a cheat sheet one that is a colored document. And that starts, um, it'll show your, our beginning balance or ending balance as of uh, June 30th, July 1st, um, how we're going to start the year. And then our revenues, expected revenues, total expenditures. Um, then we have the bond transfer and then our excess revenue expenditures. As you'll see, in five of our accounts, we do have a deficit spending and I will go through some of that with you. Um, before I go through that, I did also give you an F P 26 fund review. In case somebody didn't know how each of the funds, um, what can we spend, just to give a little summary of each fund description, I hope help you out. That's just a kind of a cheat sheet for you to keep for future. Um, but if we look in that, um, on the budget analysis, on Fund 10, we do have a deficit spending of 370,000 on that. Um, the main things on this is going to be our salaries and benefits and then also, um, the tuition and room and board for a special needs student. So, um, I'm not, I have, you have a little more detail in front of you, but I'm not going to go through all of that here. Um, but if you want to go through, you know, that section, if you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer any of that. I was waiting to get a little more information from ISB and from Northwest Co-op on the, um, the facility reimbursement and that. At this point in time, information I have here is what I was given. We were just trying to get a confirmation from ISB on how the reimbursement is such as going to go. We're not sure on the reimbursement, if it's going to be based on a calendar year or the fiscal year. So we'll have to meet the 25, approximately 25,000 upfront on the, um, room and board and then we can get reimbursement after that. The, um, the other four of the, um, section on the, will be at 50% for the room, excuse me, for the room and board, the 50% and then the tuition, I'm sorry. Tuition was at the, um, the first 25,000 will be on us. Um, but we are trying to get a little more information to get some clarification, but this is the information I have on that. Um, the numbers have decreased from last year for the, um, private facility went from reimbursement of 77,000 down to we're going to be at 50 or 55%. And if it was a public facility, we used to get a 50% reimbursement, that's going to be reduced to 0%. So as soon as we get more information, we can give you an update on that portion of it. Um, on the salaries and benefits, we're looking at an increase of about 300,000 this year from last year, um, on that, on Fund 10. Uh, we did take, and last December on the levy, we did move money from the transportation fund. We shipped it over to the education fund to have, help offset, um, the expenditures in Fund 10. the grants, the Title I, Title II, and Title IV, they did stay at, um, flat funding. Title II, we just got notification on that. They were going to take that away from us, but they did not. So we did get that and we did write that just last week, submitted it for approval. So, um, that's another for, uh, 10, Fund 10. Moving on for the building fund, Rover and I met just for maybe three minutes this afternoon and we spent a busy day. Um, he also has a deficit spending right now at the 73,480, but that is likely to be increased by an additional 100,000. Um, the supplies and our purchase services, he has already spent half of that. Just costs have gone up. We tried to redo something, so we're going to have to, um, look at Fund 20 a little bit clearer, get some more, um, estimates. Electricity, we kept it at, I tried to keep it at a level funding. We think electricity is going to continue to go up. So we're going to, um, sit down and have to go through some utilities and that. So I will know more next month on where we're going to be on Fund 20. Um, some of the funds or some of the projects for Fund 20, we did shift to the health life safety. They did qualify under the health life safety tenure study. So we were able to use health life safety funds instead of the building fund and we have, um, decreased these projects for this coming year. The biggest cost right now we have is the gym flooring project that we, um, just finished. It turned out beautiful. Um, and then more salaries and benefits, um, went through that. He's, you know, he has a steady increase on those, but we did decrease a part-time person that would work, um, in the after school, that they would be, uh, vacuuming eight rooms or so and doing a little bit up here and that and helping out. He has, um, eliminated that position. That person will, um, fill in for people here if they're sick or going to be gone vacation. They'll will fill in, but they, that position really has been eliminated to save some funds in Fund 20. Uh, transportation. Like I had said, we have redirected some levy funds. It was approximately 100,000 to the education fund. And then we have also purchased the two buses for this year. That's about 250,000. So, um, that's really where the deficit spending is coming in on the transportation for that. And then on, you will notice on the salaries and benefits, in fiscal year 23 versus fiscal year 24, there was not that much of an increase. Believe that is the year that we brought on the activity bus and the coaches started driving instead of having bus drivers. So that was, um, obviously a positive for us, that making that move. Uh, social security I M R F, that'd be Fund 50. That was an intentional, um, deficit spending just to reduce the fund in, um, for the social security. Health life safety, that is the project that we moved from 20 that qualified to be paid out of Fund 90 and that, um, we knew would be at a deficit spending. We did, um, take in a increase of 2% on the corporate personal property replacement tax. Our evidence, the evidence-based funding, which was used to be the general state aid, that did go up about 10,000. Um, so that is the only increase we have seen, but we continue to have increase in expenditures. So that's where our deficit spending is coming in and we're going to have to look at how we're going to, um, make up for some of these, uh, spending. Obviously we can't continue doing deficit spending every single year. that's about it. If you have any questions, I'm more than happy to try to answer for you.
Any questions for Lisa?
Are these deficits? I don't remember. Are these pretty standard, like is this similar to how we started last August?
We, this is the second year that we have had deficit spending in this many accounts. Normally we do not. So we're going to have to look at some things to get back on track.
Is, is the plan to give the finance committee to go over all these things so we can gear up and have a plan moving forward so we are in this situation?
More than not. We need to come to a finance committee and, and talk detail on all of this with you.
I don't remember if it was supposed to be scheduled, uh, you know, this company to finance.
Did, I did do a, um, finance report or TJ, TJ present a finance report. Um, it had the, like, the insurance, um, insurance renewals.
Yeah, we, we saw that.
Okay. I, I did that one.
I, I think that, you know, from, from that perspective and to Christina's point, we really need to dig in here, uh, figure it out.
Yeah, no, I, I agree with that. So.
Part of the problem is trying to avoid, you know, our levy going to truth of taxation.
Right. Right now we have not done the truth of taxation. Um, that would just increase everybody's property taxes and that. So we're at this point trying to stay and not do that. So if we can come up with different cuts, that would be best so it doesn't go on to each of the citizens, you know? To me, that would be a last.
We can't cut enough. It's not.
It is, it is an option. We have the levy and discounter that have to be approved. So maybe we need to do finance committee as, you know, soon and start looking at some things to decide if we want to do a truth of taxation.
Wait, next. At the last meeting, TJ ran through several sources of funding that were changing for this upcoming year. Is that already reflected in these numbers?
Yes, I know.
I believe on the back of that, it kind of shows what those funding changes are and I think you took into account.
Yeah. Okay. That was, um, like the impacts would have been the special ed transportation, the regular transportation. They were looking at getting rid of Title II re, um, Title II was really the only one that fit that area. They were going to reduce it from 6.6 million, like something million, down to two and, and then redirect the funds. But they did, um, fund Title II, so I don't know what they're doing with that at this point. Um, the school maintenance for it, we know or guaranteed that is not open yet. That is guaranteed for fiscal year 26 and 27. After that, it could go away. We don't know what's going to happen with that either.
Those impacts, like it's not that these are going to go.
Those impacts are, I already took those into consideration, but I can tell you that I will be making additional changes, um, to the, um, budget, the preliminary. I do have a couple few changes that are supposed to be made minimal, but there will be changes. I mean, obviously Rover's is the biggest at 100,000, but I do have a couple other changes that, um, have been coming by that I was, I took writing down and making changes on that. But we will have, if this will not, obviously it's not the final, since I've been finding more information out.
And at the last meeting to TJ, at, at that time, they did not know how much would be impacted by that, like the change of Medicaid.
Right. The Medicaid, I haven't received anything. We don't have any information on that. And there is talk that Medicaid will go away, but at this point in time, no information has been given on that.
Okay.
Still kind of waiting.
Okay.
There is a conference in October, October 8th, that I may go to, um, Dyadusville, Illinois Association for School Business Officials. And that ISB is going to be there in that. So I may attend that conference in Chicago to, um, see what's, what more information.
Now, under the one-time costs, you did have bus purchase that we understand and special placement is understanding. Gym floor that we improved, I, I believe we had a payment before they started work. I think we improved that, that made, is that, is that last year's budget or this year's?
We have 40,000, I believe, is the payment that was made in this fiscal year. I think it was done in two different fiscal years. I think there's also another payment to be made.
So there's another payment on the floor to come out of this budget and why, and part of it came out last?
Yes. And we don't have a final payment for the flooring because there were still a couple other things that had to be done. I don't, I don't know where that's at, you know, dollar wise.
Okay, but this, this, the whole gym floor is incredibly good to this.
40,000 of this year's money is, and that's just one of our main projects. The other projects that we are doing have been, um, have really reduced. We've taken a lot of, I didn't bring that with me on my desk. We took a lot of projects off the list to do and put them on hold.
No.
To keep the costs down. Yes.
So I think prior to next board meeting, maybe we can get a line and see if we can get together and just be able to have TJ, he said if you're available to walk through on that, those updates and just make, uh, what options are available to, you know, kind of, and so to speak. Any other questions for Lisa? Thank you.
Thanks for pulling it up.
Yeah.
Moving on to six point eight, I don't know if any of the management was going to be increasing. I don't have details on this. Do you guys have?
I don't know anything about it.
I can tell you a little.
Okay.
Um, the, we were looking at the ingenuity. I don't know what the increase he was going to go to. I believe the, the fees on it, um, Darren, help me out. Was it $75 for junior high currently and 100 for a high school student? Or is it?
Credit recovered?
Yes.
75 for high school, 50 for junior.
Oh, 75 and 50. Okay. And so we were looking at making that, I believe, a flat dollar amount for either junior high or high school and increasing that rate, uh, because of the cost of the program itself. Just it's, I, I want to say. Just it's, I, I want to say like six to eight thousand, Darren?
For a year, for eight licenses, yeah. But I guess I've never been a part of a conversation raising it, so I can't answer that. But the cost to be charged should cover what we need.
What we're, what we're voting on as for us to charge students for this?
I would table it until you get more information from TJ. It's just a conversation that TJ, the information I know is the conversation TJ and I had is to make it a, a flat dollar amount, no matter what grade you're in, and raising it to help offset the cost of the program itself, which is six, eight thousand every year.
That's my question. It's what we're going to charge the students for these credit dollars, not what we're expen, what they're, it's not what they're raising it on us, what we want to raise it for them.
We want to raise it, yes.
We don't know exact numbers.
I, I have it in my office, but I was not prepared.
I think it's best to table it.
Oh, yes, I think it's best to table it.
So we will table six point eight? I don't, I don't, it's a table motion, I don't.
No, you decided to make no action on it.
So then, any other new business?
Yeah. Yeah, our last division meeting, October second, Magal, I have no idea when to it. Let go, let Tracy know. If you want to do the virtual online here at home, let her know when you sign up for that. You will receive a link, but it's closer to the meeting.
Okay. Is that me?
Oh, wait, I believe it's October second. Thursday, Thursday and second of Thursday today.
Okay. What time is that in the S?
Well, they're going to go over those amendments, I think, at five thirty.
Five forty-five, six is registration, six fifteen enter, and seven is the meeting.
So you find, find out what we're about what.
So it's, we're in a Magal song from five forty-five, probably. No later.
Email, but there is a, who's the recent, who's presenting?
Dr. Tony Sanders.
He's like the.
State superintendent of education.
He's going to provide key updates on ISB's strategic priorities.
I, I will attend that.
In person?
Yep.
Thank you, Dan.
And we also want to go, like I said, we are the only division in the state that offers a virtual and in-person. There's no cost for the virtual. Like I said, you have to be pre-registered and then they will send you a link before the event. Just log you through some regulations.
Appreciate it, Dan. Thank you. All right. Moving on to personnel.
Make a motion that we remove the personnel items as presented to the more than twenty eight, twenty twenty-five meeting.
And move by Dave, who's the first to second. Roll company.
Ryan?
Hi.
McDermott?
Hi.
Sen?
Hi.
Shower?
Hi.
Foot?
Hi.
Gilbert?
Hi.
I would like to welcome Steve Kane, Daisy Berthwaite, Emily Suter, and Ethan Miller to the school district and thank those that are present for the time. And Mr. Smith for continuing to stay on. Thank you. All right. So we are going to a thank you session. So it's everything was showing on the agenda, but it's for litigation when action against a faculty board on behalf of the particular public body has been filed and is pending before the court or administrated through tribunal or when the public body finds that an action is probable or imminent, in which case the basis for the finding is up in court and it's going to be a court meeting. This is for five items, CS one twenty slash two C. Tracy, if you could just make sure that it's specified on the. And move by Dave.
Okay.
Second by Dave, I wasn't there, but see if I was saying I.
I.
No, thank you. No, thank you. I don't want that job. Hi there, Diane.